Today is Monday, November 27, 2017. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We're here for the purpose of the Committee of the Whole. It is 8:20, and I see you all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yes.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as thou sprawl.
Okay there, Ben?
I forget what my heart is doing.
Hopefully your doctor knows. Clerk Spencer, I'd ask you to call a roll.
Mulliner.
Here.
Brennan.
Here.
Sabatino. Absent. Deuter.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Leader.
Here.
Palomsky.
Here.
Bram.
Here.
Paludo.
Here.
York.
Here.
Levin.
Here.
Park.
Here.
Anquist.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Thirteen present, one absent.
Thirteen present, one absent. We have a quorum. We are in session. Any announcements? Seeing none, we'll move on. Clerk Spencer, public comment. Do we have anybody signed up for public comment?
Mayor, we do not have anyone that's signed up for public comment.
Anybody in the audience who do not have an opportunity to sign up for public comment but wishes to address the council at this time? Mr. Cobb?
Mayor, there's no movement.
Seeing none, we'll move on. Business for the council. Review of fiscal year budget 2018. City manager, are you ready to go?
Yes, we are.
Fantastic. Let's go. We've got about five items to cover before we jump into circle back.
Thank you. Where we left off was the stormwater fund, page 262. I will turn it over to Director Killian to highlight a couple of items, and then we're happy to answer questions.
Thank you. In the stormwater fund, well, just a quick look at back at 2017. We did finish six projects this year. The Madison, Washington, Pine and Avon, Crescent, Cambridge, Harrison, and York in 290. So that concludes our total over the last two years to nine of our basins and areas that we've completed. Looking forward into 2018, we again have $500,000 set aside for possible property or land acquisition in next year's budget. Some of the major projects we'll be working on that are found back in the CEBs. If you look on CEB page 91, it's the Southwest Infrastructure Improvements. And what we've done is we've kind of changed it around a little bit. Phase one is the Messiah Project, or Brian, which keeps rotating, so we've kind of called it the Southwest Infrastructure Phase One. Phase two, that we'll also be looking at next year is the, basically, the Christ United or the Jackson Property that we're looking at with their. And then Phase three, which we'll be looking forward, is we have some continued engineering dollars for looking with, or working with DuPage County on stormwater modeling and some preliminary engineering on the Sailor Swain Valette area. So we're starting to look at that area. If we can come to agreement with possibly the school districts, park districts, or other property owners, we also have money to begin some of the design work for the College View stormwater improvements. And then, again, continuing strictly with floodproofing policies and some of the other commercial multifamily. One thing that we don't have in here that some of the fourth ward aldermen have asked us for is now that we're done with the Pine, Avon, Stormwater Improvement Project, one of the items that we haven't covered with the neighbors yet is some sort of amenity in there, whether it be passive or recreational in that area. And we don't have a CEB prepared for that, mainly because we really don't know. The basin was just completed in the fall. We haven't done our survey with the neighbors yet. So we really don't know what level of improvement, if needed, would be required out there. So it's hard for staff to prepare any budget, whether it be $5,000 or $200,000, what may go into that. So that's something throughout the year we'll be bringing back to the Public Works Committee and then the council for review and approval on that.
Okay.
If I can add to something that Director Killian said, and that's regarding the schools and Park District. We do have two areas left where we're trying to work with, School District 205, and that is the College View area, which is York High School. And we've had some conversations with them in the City Park School group that has recently come back together. And Superintendent Moyer contacted me recently that he has been given direction by the school board on some provisions for Jackson School, which is next to the Christ United Methodist property that we just purchased. We hope that there might be an opportunity to gain a couple few acre feet of storage on that property. And so it's my, I just set a meeting with Dr. Moyer for this week so that we can have that discussion.
Okay. Anything else from staff on stormwater? Any questions? I have a question. Page 264. Line item 01-00. The Property Acquisition Fund, I don't know what you call it, right? 264. Howard, you mentioned it in your speech. We had $500,000 added to it.
Correct.
What's the balance right now? Because right now it says 217 budget and estimated at 1.6. I know that we recently made a purchase for rounding sake. Let's just call it $300,000. I might understand that 1.3 will carry over, and we're going to add 500 to that. So we'll have 1.8 million available for buyouts.
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. Any other stormwater questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on.
Okay, next is the Capital Improvement Fund, page 168. Obviously, we talk about a lot of, we kind of jump back and forth to the Capital Improvement Fund, the CEB, as far as the different departments go. So again, I'll turn it over to Director Killian for any comments, and then we're happy to answer any questions.
I think individually, we went through most of them with the individual accountant items. So if there's, will entertain any questions, if we have any particular one, if the council has.
Any questions on the Capital Improvement Fund? Okay, let's move on.
Page 266, Bond and Interest. I'm going to turn that over to Director Trozine for comments.
So this section includes two funds. The first fund is listed, starts on page 267. This is our debt service for our general obligation bonds. It's really the fund that we make all of the bond payments out of. And you'll see transfers in, mostly from the Capital Improvement Fund, the TIF Fund Redevelopment Fund, and the Stormwater Fund. That's on page 268, where you'll see those transfers. And the expenditures are on 269. Those are all of our general obligation bonds. Again, for those funds, we allocate the debt for the MUF and the parking directly to those funds.
Say that last part again, Mr. Trozine.
So these are just the general TIF and stormwater funds. So any debt that we've allocated to the MUF, the utility fund, and the parking fund, those are the enterprise funds. We record that debt directly in those funds.
Where's the debt for the new parking deck? Is that here, or is that in the?
So that debt is actually recorded in the parking fund. But then we do have transfers in. And again, that's where we've budgeted either a capital improvement fund in prior years, and then in 18 and 19, the use of TIF funds for those, at that service for the Addison Deck.
Okay. Any questions?
The second fund is the Bond and Interest 2006, the Revenue Fund. That's the bond that we issued regarding the Route 83 development. And that is funded totally by that developer. They submit all the payments for the annual debt service. We hold those funds until due and then make the payments. And I believe there's about six years left on that bond.
Any questions? Alden Levin.
Are these kinds of bonds through, that we used here, are they still available for development? Are these kind of gone by wayside now?
I believe we could still do this, the way this, we issued this bond.
Can I answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
I want to go back to my previous question, Mr. Trozine. We're talking about making a debt service payment with TIF dollars and TIF 1 on the parking deck.
Correct.
There seemed to be a little confusion at the JRB held in this room a couple hours ago. My understanding that in the agreement we had with District 205 where we released properties, there was going to be a make-whole calculation, and we would not consider surpluses until that we had reached that make-whole. Is it correct to state that the debt service payment that is being paid with TIF 1 dollars on the parking garage is part of our make-whole calculation, and we have not hit our make-whole threshold yet?
That's correct. We actually, I think everybody understands, when we were providing that make-whole schedule and those projections, they were inaccurate by one year due to the TIF statutes that allow for property taxes collected for the 24th year, actually collected in the 25th year. So all of, we revised those make-whole schedules, pushing them further ahead, allowing additional funds available in the TIF that we then allocated to those two debt service payments. We have not projected anything higher than that. But again, that's all within the make-whole agreement, that, those two debt service payments.
Well, another way to state that would be that the properties were leased, because there is an additional year calculated, created a larger make-whole amount that was owed to the city.
Correct.
And we are just following that schedule that we set up.
Correct, and using those additional funds to...
I think that's an important point to make. I just want to make sure that all were clear on that. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, what's next?
Next, we have the Trust and Agency Fund. And to start with that, we have the public safety pensions in there, firefighters and police officers. I know Finance Committee's had conversation regarding those and where to set the levels. So we're happy to answer any questions that the council may have about that.
Any questions? Okay.
Next is the Gloss Mausoleum Fund. This is a unique, an Elmhurst...
What page are you at on?
I'm sorry, it's page 281.
281.
This is a unique Elmhurst fund. Not seen a Gloss Mausoleum fund in any of their municipal budgets. But this is a situation where the Gloss Mausoleum property was deeded to the city and that we would take care of that, along with some funds. The Park District manages the property around it by an agreement with the city. And then this is a fund that would be, would be used for any repairs to the mausoleum.
Do we pay the Park District to do that?
We actually contracted out, I believe.
I'm asking if we pay for them to maintain it.
We do not.
Okay.
And then on page 285, last item in this category is the Working Cash Fund. That is a fund that we have tried to keep at, fund at the million-dollar level to help us throughout the year as needed. And happy to say that we're back at that million dollars. Some aldermen will recall, when budgets were tight, we took that down significantly, and we were able to bring that back up and sustain it since then.
Any comments or questions? I think we got it down to $23,000 at one point. Worked real hard to get it down there. Okay. Anything else?
Nothing in that group.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay, before we move on to circle back, any other questions that I'm missing from anybody? Okay. City manager, I know that Mr. Trozine issued a memorandum on the 21st addressing the circle backs that were noted. Floor is yours.
Thank you. We can take these one by one. I think we've provided information specifically to any of the issues. So as far as number one goes, the Explorer Elmhurst, as Alderman Palomsky pointed out to us, we went back and looked for the receipts on that. We partnered with the Chamber of Commerce to do, to purchase the advertising, solicit and purchase the advertising for the trolley. And so that was booked incorrectly in a miscellaneous charge, and so we've changed that.
All right, so, sorry. So what's the net effect? Go ahead. What's the net effect of the change, then? Do we have more revenue, less revenue? I think we're, in the whole, $3,600.
The estimated for '17, it's accounted for, but we would actually, part of the carryovers, we would add $3,600 as a revenue line item for that account. So it would be a 3,600 in '18.
So plus $3,600.
Correct.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions? Okay, circle back to?
Number two, there was a question Alderman Bram had regarding the detail for part-time wages. In particular, I think it was the communications intern. But we provided the breakdown of that entire account.
Certified Alderman Bram on that one? No further questions. All right. Legal Department.
Legal Department, question about all the legal fees. I think when we were at the table discussing this, we had commented that there were legal fees out of the TIF funds. And so we provided breakdown of the expenditures from TIF funds for legal fees.
Okay, any questions? Alderman Bram.
Thank you, and thank you for the information. So my understanding, just to make sure I'm clear, and I'm not sure about one of the figures that's listed in the paragraph, it mentions three figures being paid out for legal, 821,757, 724,962, and 96,795. My understanding is, and it's on page 156, that the 724,962 is the total amount out of account 110,0081 on page 156. My thought is that the 96,795 is TIF, but I'm not sure where the other number comes from, if my comment about 96,000 is accurate.
It's a total number? Is that what you're asking?
Well, there's three numbers listed.
Yeah, the first one's the total, and they kind of put them in reverse.
Oh, they just totaled them?
They put them in reverse. So it's a total, then the breakout's what follows. No further questions. All right. Visitors and Tourism.
The question from Visitors and Tourism was regarding the amount that was paid for holiday decorations and how those were broken out with the business districts. So we did that for 2015 and to the '18 and '19 projected budgets. I would note that the commentary continues on the second page where Assistant Manager Cobb corrected the amount, which was 42 and should have been 24 for the 2018 budget. 42,000 and 24,000, excuse me. And there was a second item regarding visitor and tourism, and that was line 6098. That's page 165, sorry. Line item 6098, which is the $50,000 line item, and how that breaks down with the American Legion and the city center physical services.
Alderman Bram, any questions on the lighting for City Center and Spring Road?
I guess my only question is what I've said before, in regards to the city participating in that, which was solely done by City Center in the past years. I'm glad to see it going down from 42 to 24,000, and it looks like we're heading in the right direction, so no further questions.
Okay. I have a question here. Yeah. So the 6098 for '18 has $105,000 in the budget?
Correct.
And I had it marked as 75 for the City Center and 30 for American Legion?
That's correct.
Okay. Got it. Thanks. Okay, any other questions on either one of those items?
Just to follow up to that, the $30,000 for the American Legion for this coming year, 2018, we had the Legion in last month, and they indicated they were not seeking another grant for 2018. So I'm just wondering why that appeared. Was it an accident to leave it in, or how did that get in there?
City manager?
I received a request emailed to me by the commander of the Post requesting the $30,000 specifically for the Thanksgiving Day Feed the Troops event and for the Military Ball. It's my understanding that would go back through PA and S Committee for discussion, and I'm sure there will be further, further thoughts on that.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, let's move on.
Point number five was the inner fund transfer from general fund, excuse me, to the stormwater fund. I think it's primarily what you asked a few minutes ago, Mayor. The transfer specifically in 2016 was for the purchase of three properties on Washington Street.
Okay, any questions on that? Alderman Bram.
Thank you, and I believe I discussed this last week on this circle back. I guess this is an opportunity at least to see if there's any will for further discussion. Knowing that the carryover is going to be approximately 1.3 million from that 1.6 million, and this is for buyouts, correct?
Correct.
And it seems like your year or policy has been for $1 million for this line item. I'm just wondering on if there's any need to budget anything in 2018, because we're going to be carrying over 1.3 million, which is $300,000 over what we budgeted for this policy in previous years. I would like to hear other councils' thoughts on that, if they will. But my feeling is that we're already carrying over more than what we've said policy-wise on this, so that we should not budget $500,000 for the 2018 budget.
Alderman Mulliner.
I think we need to budget the amount that has been recommended, because we have a number of projects that are still outstanding and potential buyouts that are out there that are large-volume buyouts. And I think that there's some that we just need to be prepared for. So I think we're better off having the additional budget there. If it's not needed, it's not needed, but at least the budget's there to be able to spend it. I think we've got enough projects that will easily, if we are able to purchase the properties, spend that money.
Alderman Deuter.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with Alderman Mulliner. I think whether it's for, you know, a project-specific buyout or to alleviate the flooding of a particular area, I think it's good to have that there, and I believe we'll spend it for, I believe we'll spend it.
Okay, any additional comments? Alderman Bram.
Thank you. And thank you for both, Alderman, for providing your insight on the issue. Just past history, you know, this hasn't been around for very long. We spent close to $900,000 in 2016. We're only spending $300,000 proposed this year, or I shouldn't say we proposed, because it's happened or about to happen. So both years combined, we barely spent over $1.1 million. Once again, I refer to a policy that we as a council agreed upon of 1 million. So we're talking about looking at past history, never spending up to our policy amount of $1 million, barely spending that amount over two years, but allocating the carryover of 1.3 and an additional $500,000 for properties that, at least from my insight on the Public Works Committee, we don't seem to have the ability, at least from what I know sitting here today, to be able to acquire multiple properties that would come anywhere close to $1.8 million. So I understand it's just a budget item. I get that. But I refer back to our own policy. I refer back also to our history on this line item. Our history in the two years that it's been in existence does not show us ever reaching a million dollars. Mr. Mayor, from a procedural perspective, do you take motions at this point?
Absolutely. If you want to make an adjustment, I think it's an appropriate time to make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to remove line item 9839 on page 167 of $500,000 for the fiscal budget of 2018.
Okay, so a motion to take that number down to zero, from 500 to zero, with the understanding that there's a carryover of roughly 1.3.
Correct.
Good summation. Okay, do I have a second for that motion? Alderman Bram, I don't think we have a second.
I tried, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Any discussion on stormwater? It's Committee of the Whole, so I'm going to opine before we move on. This is a tough one, because I see both sides of it. Kind of the way I look at it would be, this council has been very aggressive in their stormwater management, in my opinion. If we reduced it 500,000, and I think we said the total will be about 1.8 with the carryover. If we reduce it 500,000 and it was 1.3, I believe that if this council was presented with an opportunity for buyouts that totaled even $2 million, and it made sense, we'd probably do it. So I can see there's merits to both. This is just, I guess, conservative planning, and I don't think that's the worst thing. But like I said, especially when it comes to stormwater, it's kind of one of those things when an opportunity presents itself. So, all right, city manager, what's next?
Thank you. Next is Public Benefits, page 152. However, I would direct you to CEB page 49. That's the specific project that was asked about, and that's the Prairie Path at York Street.
Sorry, what was that? Oh, the underpass, okay.
Page 49 on the CEB. This is a project that has been before us many years, as Alderman Bram pointed out. And the way that it came before us was some grant funding through DuPage Mayor and Managers' Conference for a good portion of a potential project. Where it stalled is whether or not we do the Phase One, which is estimated at $150,000, to try and proceed for more grant funds. As we've had this conversation, the Public Affairs and Safety Committee asked for some alternatives to, actually, I'm sorry, Public Works Committee actually asked for some alternatives, but the Public Affairs and Safety Committee had been talking about the issue previously. So we had an engineering study done of some alternatives that is waiting to be discussed at PA and S. We had to have some conversations with the county, because they own the trail. We had to have some conversations with the Park District, because they maintain the trail, and they own property on the north side of the trail. So I know that... So I know that the city engineer has had those conversations and his plans to come back to the Public Affairs and Safety Committee with those thoughts, and what we did for the circle back was to basically highlight that along with yours as possible project.
Mr. Levin?
I think from, I think I can speak for the committee, one of the things that was brought to our attention was, and I don't know if I have the data here, but there was a significant number of accidents at that crossing that were recent, which caused the Public Affairs and Safety Committee to look back and say, well...
Since the new signals, we think, right?
Yeah. Well, we talked about a couple of different things, but I think because of the accidents that had occurred in the last two years or maybe three years, there was a significant bump, we decided we would look at it again. And we also asked the question of, I don't know if City Manager was there, I think we learned from our question that if we don't do something relatively soon, the grant funds will may move on to another project.
What is the expiration of our rights to that funding?
We are checking with the transportation people at DuPage Mayor and Managers so that we have a more hard date. They've just said, as long as you're making progress on it, we'll kind of let it ride. However, with the changes at CMAP recently, that has spurred us to ask further. We don't have an answer for you tonight. We're just getting in touch with Mark this week.
Okay. Alderman Bram?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My understanding was the Route eighty-three proposed overpass was going to utilize this funding instead of the York Prairie Path underpass. I know the P A and S committee did not have an opportunity tonight to, at least I don't think so, to discuss this. I know it was on their agenda this evening. I did look at the material. There are obviously pros and cons for anything that we do, including an over or underpass, in this case, an underpass. I think that the alternatives that were proposed, and I don't want to dive too deep into what's pending on a committee, are obviously significantly cheaper, and we've already done some improvements by cutting back trees and bushes to have a better line of sight in this area. And since then, and I guess anybody in the room could correct me, since then I have not heard any status update in the negative context where there have been either close calls or accidents, so hopefully that has helped. Hopefully, education in regards to looking both ways before you enter a crosswalk also helps. I feel that we've gave this justified thought over the last number of years, I don't know, four or five years. It's a significant dollar amount, grant funding or not. We can apply for grant funding for other areas. I feel that this is past its time. We have some opportunity and some proposals that the P A and S committee is going to look at shortly that are cheaper and I think would serve the same purpose. So I'd like to make a motion to...
Mr. Bram, before you make that motion, can I ask to get a little more information out of the staff that might help or, you know, at least relevant to your motion?
Sure.
City Manager, are we talking about page one fifty-two, eighty twenty-five, the four hundred and fifteen thousand? Is that right? Okay.
Yes.
How much of that? Question, and maybe a clarification. How much of the four fifteen that's projected is covered by the grant? Would be covered by the grant?
Zero.
Zero? So it's just, is that just for engineering?
That is, for the two bike path projects, that would be Phase One dollars, which the grant does not cover. And so what that is, it's a preliminary engineering study to look at routing and property and those type of things. I'll compare it to the metro station. When we applied for the CMAP dollars, we paid for the Phase One.
Right.
Which then allowed us to go for the grant funding.
And it's, sorry to cut you off, is this only for, I know Alderman Bram talked a little bit about eighty-three, is this only for dollars allocated for the Prairie Path? Did I miss it?
We have funds dedicated for both the Prairie Path and for the Route eighty-three Phase Ones.
But not in this line item or?
In that line item.
Okay. So how much of the four fifteen is for the Prairie Path?
A hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay.
For the Prairie Path. We have the Phase One for Route eighty-three, because it's a little more complicated, is estimated at a hundred and eighty thousand. We've budgeted ninety, and we were hoping to go to the county and the forest preserve to see if they would split the cost. We've had some preliminary conversations with them, see if they would split the cost of the Phase One so that we can then proceed for grant dollars.
And does any of the eighty-three qualify for TIF funding?
I think it's too far removed from TIF III.
Is it across the street? What were we talking about?
No, it's south of Lake Street.
Yeah, it's, it would, what we are envisioning is there's some forest preserve property to south of Fay.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. I was thinking across from Kmart, but this is up north.
Yeah, this is another overpass. And if I can ask a question of Alderman Bram, when you say you thought the funds were being used for the Route eighty-three bridge, were you talking about the Phase One dollars budgeted or the grant funds?
Grant funds.
We are not, unfortunately, we're not allowed to just transfer funds from one project to another. We actually have to go back through, let's say that we decide we don't want to do the Prairie Path project, and we tell DuPage Mayor and Managers, we're not going to use the funds, that gets returned to them for the STP program. We would have to reapply with our project to get the grant funds for the Route eighty-three.
Okay. Thanks for the clarification. I remember discussing in the Public Works Committee. It was my understanding, at least at that time, that if we didn't move forward, and at that time, the committee at that point was not wanting to move forward with this project, and it was discussed to, maybe what was meant was to reapply for those same dollars for the eighty-three, but those two were mentioned in conjunction. So thank you for the clarification on the grant dollars and the utilization.
And one last thing, Alderman Bram, before you make your motion, the way this fund works at DuPage Mayor's and Managers is you just don't reapply, and your standards are the same. You're going up against projects from every, so every year, everyone's, like, we just got, out of this fund, we got a chunk of money for the Metro, the two point four out of Metro, right?
Correct.
But you're really up against the strength of other applicants, not necessarily just because you qualified last time. So, all right, that's enough. It covered what I wanted to cover. Alderman Bram, the floor was yours. You were going to make a motion.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to, I don't know how you want me to word it, but remove a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from line item eighty dash twenty-five for the projected fiscal year of twenty eighteen.
I think it's a fair motion. I think, to clarify, the purpose is removing the hundred and fifty thousand in that line item that's allocated for the Prairie Path.
That is correct.
Okay. So we have a motion to reduce line item eighty twenty-five on page one fifty-two by a hundred and fifty thousand, which is the estimated amount for continued Phase Two, is it?
Phase One.
Phase One, engineering on the underpass. Do I have a second? Go for two, Alderman Bram. Question?
Yes, sir. It totally escaped me what my question was, literally in seconds.
Was it about this one? About this line item?
Yeah. Oh, now I got it. So what's allocated here is from a geo-bond? So what bond is this coming from?
That's correct. The way we envision that is general obligation bond funded by general fund.
So I mean, is it a current bond that we've already issued, or you're saying to issue another general obligation bond for this?
It would be a general obligation bond for a number of capital projects.
Do we have an understanding of, other than these two, engineering on what those are in the proposed dollar amount? So it's more than the four hundred and fifteen, I assume?
Guess it's millions.
Correct. We're anticipating possibly another ten million dollar bond issue in two thousand and eighteen. We just finished up the Stormwater Fund, discussed in that, two projects, the College View Project and the Southwest Project that do not have funding right now, so I think that was a total of five million dollars, so it would be a mix of funding projects.
Thank you.
Any other questions on circle back six? Okay, circle back seven.
Thank you. This was a question about how much fund balance to carry in the MFT fund. So roughly right now, there's five hundred and eighty thousand in there. It was suggested that it could be something less than that. As I think everybody knows, we have great concern over what the state may or may not do, and whether they will or will not fund things like this, which explains why we've kept it where we have. However, that's a policy decision of the council, and we'll open it up for questions or discussion.
All right. Alderman York, you had this as a circle back.
Yeah, so I, thank you. I've talked to the city staff about this, and I still, I understand the concern about the state of Illinois on every level. It doesn't just pertain to this fund or anything like that. I understand that. So I think we could, you know, certainly bring it to committee. It might go to the finance committee, but I think, you know, if we look at like twenty-five percent, our average annual spend, or the budgeted spend is one point two million dollars roughly. Twenty-five percent of that number is about three hundred thousand dollars. I think there's, you know, room for additional expenses. I don't think, to be taken out of the general fund and moved into the motor fuel tax fund. I'm not saying we have to, you know, do it all in one fell swoop, but I'd certainly be interested in trying to move a couple hundred thousand dollars and leave three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so I guess I'd like to make a motion to move two hundred thousand dollars of fund balance, move some, two hundred thousand dollars of qualified motor fuel tax expenses from the general fund to the motor fuel tax fund.
All right. I'm going to ask you to say that again. Please say that again, Alderman New York. You want to move money?
Move.
Out of the motor fuel tax?
No, move expenses out of the general fund, the qualified...
Qualified expenses.
Or the motor fuel tax fund, thereby reducing the fund balance by two hundred thousand.
I understand. Okay. So City Manager, do you understand what he's saying?
Yes, I do.
Okay. So right now, we've got a fund balance projected at two thousand and eighteen of five hundred and fifty two thousand. That's what this is showing, and you're asking staff to basically reduce the amount of that fund balance by two hundred thousand by paying... There's certainly qualified expenses that would qualify, I'm assuming, yes?
Right.
So you're asking staff to allocate payments, two hundred thousand dollars in payments out of motor fuel that normally would come out of our general fund. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So... I'm trying to figure out the clearest way to make a motion.
If I can attempt, I think another way to look at it is adding two hundred thousand of revenue from MFT into the general fund.
I don't know if you can do that, though.
I mean, a fund balance.
Qualified spending makes more sense than moving it.
I'm sorry. Right, right. I'm sorry.
Let's try City Manager.
That'd certainly be easier, but I don't think we can do that.
All right.
Move two hundred thousand of general fund expenditures into MFT.
Yes.
Okay. So the motion would be to pay for two hundred thousand dollars of additional qualifying motor fuel tax expenditures that we would pay for, that we would pay for out of the general fund, but want to pay for them out of motor fuel.
Yes.
It's an awkward motion. Does everyone understand it? Does anybody not understand it? Okay. Great. So we have a motion to spend an additional two hundred thousand dollars out of the motor fuel tax fund that, on qualified expenses that are currently paid out of the general fund. Do we have a second? Alderman Kennedy with a second. Discussion. Alderman Deuter?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm wondering, I'm thinking about the purpose of this. Would this be to just increase our fund balance in the general fund, or would this have some impact on the levy? Do you envision this having some impact on the levy?
I... Alderman New York?
It's going to have an effect this year for sure of exactly what you just said, but in effect, it's just bringing the fund balance that's historically in this fund down to a compromise level between what city staff desires it to be and using general fund dollar, or saving general fund dollars that could be easily put into this category. So it relieves the general fund of expenses while not impairing the balance in this fund to a great extent, which is the concern of city staff.
Let me ask a question. As Alderman New York pointed out, obviously, we have a balanced target for our general fund. We have that same guidelines for this, or is...
We've not adhered to that as much. We've been a little higher with MFT in our fund balance than our general fund projected in twenty-five to thirty-three.
There's been an unwritten policy that we followed?
Yes.
Okay. And to answer Alderman Deuter's question, Alderman New York, basically, yes, there will be a benefit, but it sounds to me like with this motion, you would reduce it, but you'd like to see it that way.
I think this is a, this is a good compromise to take some dollars that are just sitting there, not doing anything, and have them be productive to the taxpayer, and then we can get this to whatever committee needs to look at it to establish...
I understand.
...a fund balance going forward.
Okay.
A similar fund balance policy like we have for the general fund, for the working cash fund, and for a bunch of other funds.
Okay. Alderman Mulliner?
Actually, Alderman New York just said what I think we should do. I think instead of having a motion to move this at this moment, I think it would be better off to take this to the finance committee and have them go through a discussion and set a policy to set the fund balance level so it's a formal policy, so that we have a better understanding, we have a chance to look at it a little closer. I'm a little bit concerned about just changing fund balances kind of at a meeting like this. I'd rather have some homework done by the whole finance committee to come back and say, hey, this is what we need to do, and this is where we think our qualified fund balances are qualified expenditures, so we have a better handle on that.
Okay. Any still comments or questions? Alderman Levin, then I'll go to Alderman Bram.
So you are talking about the balance on one ninety-five, correct?
On one ninety-five, yeah.
Yeah, on page one ninety-five. All right. The concern that I would, or the question I would ask staff is it seems like even if the fund balance is higher, it looks like it's been declining since two thousand and fifteen and projected to two thousand and nineteen, where it's going to go down over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Is there something happening that, it's not going up and down, it's going down? Or are you just allocating more expenses to this as we...
As proposed, as projected, the motor fuel tax revenues are fairly flat and consistent. Our current practice is that we do allocate salaries to the MFT, and so those are going up by the percentage by the contracts, and so those are the projected use of fund balance as you noted. We would consider, we would, more than likely, as based on the state, it has been a flat revenue source, that that would continue.
All right. I think I like Alderman Mulliner's approach. I think I trust the chair of the finance committee to look carefully at this, and that's the way I would prefer to do it.
Any other comments? Alderman Bram?
Thank you. I just wanted to say, I agree with Alderman Mulliner. I think that albeit a good idea, I'm not sure where the two hundred thousand dollars comes from. I'm not sure, were you just waving it, Tom?
I was waving a fly off.
Oh.
Sorry. After I did it, I thought, man... Sorry, after I did it, I thought, man, I wonder how that looked.
I thought you were hitting him on the side of the head there. Was, I think going and having a deeper look at this within the finance committee and then bringing it to the full city council would give it its due diligence and due time for all of us to kind of have an understanding of what should be the qualified expenses. Maybe it's more than just salaries, like I think Alderman York is hinting at without saying it. So, maybe, maybe that is appropriate. But I caution, moving forward at this time, I think creating a policy based on this would be the right step.
Any other comments? Alderman Deuter.
Thank you, mayor. I do agree that having a close look and setting a policy in committee makes sense. I think the only time to look at it now would be if it does have the potential to change the levy that, that I know the finance committee has been looking at. So, I think that's the timing issue. If it won't have an effect on the levy, then I would not be inclined to change it now.
Okay.
Let me ask a question.
Alderman Levin.
So, Alderman York, is that your goal is to look at impacts on the tax levy and looking at ways to sort of minimize that effect?
Let me, let me try to jump in. I don't want to put Alderman York in a box. Let me, one of the biggest considerations that council is being asked to consider when it comes to the tax levy is that magic chart we have where the black line is kind of going through and that black line and that blue line, that blue path, that's our fund balance. So, any savings or any money that we can leave in the general fund does affect that. How it affects the council's opinion on the tax levy, I think, is up to the individual person. But it's a direct effect to the general fund. And if you're using a general fund as your measure of how to, whether or not to increase your tax levy, that's part of your consideration. Does that make sense? Alderman York.
Thank you, your honor. So, yeah, that's a great, a great explanation. I think the reasoning for what I chose, the 200, was our range in the general fund is 25 to 33%. So, 25% fund balance of the five, of the spend of $1.2 million approximately is about $300,000. The 33% number is 395,000. If we made the $200,000 adjustment, that would leave a fund balance of 352, which kind of puts it right there in between all the other numbers. And it takes an asset of the city that's relatively underutilized at this point in time. And I certainly appreciate and understand the caution by city staff. But we're, by no means, in my opinion, all things that we know today, cutting off our nose despite our face with this particular move. I'm fine if we want to bring it back and take a good look at it, but it's $200,000 just sitting there not doing anything. So, that's the reason I'm making the motion.
Okay. Additional comments or questions? Alderman Dunn.
Just to clarify, so, I assume there's a bucket of expenses that we could shift over there far in excess of 200,000 to just cover that. And I think the intent was just for one year for this, is what I gather for the motion, further out. Just clarifying.
That's what I've heard so far. Any other comments or questions? Alderman Palmsky.
Just historically, for these expenses that are eligible, yet were not covered from this account, why, why would some expenses still be in the general fund? Is it just something that's revisited every so often, the eligibility here?
I don't believe we have enough MFT revenue to cover all the eligible expenses.
Okay, okay.
That's correct.
Any other comments? Okay, I'm going to ask Clerk Spencer to call on the vote. And just to clarify what you're voting for, the motion basically is to reduce this fund balance by $200,000 and use that, those funds to pay for qualifying funds that would have been paid for out of the general fund. The end result would be a lower fund balance in the motor fuel tax area, right?
And a higher fund balance on
And a higher fund balance in the general fund. That's if you vote, that's if the motion passes. Clerk Spencer.
Mulliner.
No.
Brennan.
Aye.
San Patino absent. Deuter.
No.
Dunn.
No.
Leader.
Aye.
Palmsky.
No.
Bram.
No.
Toledo.
No.
York.
Aye.
Levin.
No.
Park.
Aye.
Hanquist.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Six ayes. Seven nays and one absent.
Six ayes, seven nays, motion fails. Point of order? Yes. Is it the rule of seven or, or do you need a super majority? Two questions. Don't need, it's committee. I don't, you don't need a super majority.
And it's also not the rule of seven.
And it's not the rule of seven.
Because it's not the, it wasn't on the positive side. It has to be on the positive side for the rule of seven to play.
So, seven six, not six seven?
Right.
Yeah, my vote only makes it a worse tie.
Right.
If I voted that way. We'll explain it to the new aldermen in their second year, yeah. All right. Any additional discussion on circle back number two? Alderman Bram.
Not in regards to what's on the circle back. In light of what happened today with the police activity, and I want to give kudos publicly to the police department for acting so quickly. But it is relevant to the budget as well. I was getting there.
Just a lot of puzzled looks around the adias.
We talked, or I asked the questions in regards to the license plate readers before, and the chief, I know he's not here this evening, but made mention of a two-year plan. The reason why I bring this up is, you know, upon the, not even today's recent police activity, but there seems to be relatively more police activity than we would like to see. Would it be beneficial of accelerating that plan and doing it this upcoming fiscal year? And I know I'm kind of putting you in a spot, city manager, since the chief is not here. But is that something that should be considered? And if so, I would like to obviously make a motion to amend.
Let's identify where it is in the budget, how much it is. It's probably motor fuel qualified, Alderman Bram. Just saying.
I know the police is on 129 to 131. I don't know exactly what line item.
I believe that's page 130, police budget.
Is it miscellaneous equipment?
Yeah, line 8098. I appreciate your comments about the police department and I certainly share them with today's arrests that were made. And I understand what you're saying with increased police activity, it seems. And we've had some good occasions to use, we've had some good fortune in using these to apprehend the perpetrators. Let me talk with Chief Ruth about that and only because I think it might be a timing issue and what we can accomplish
Okay.
Over that next year. I think that's, that's always the way chief has looked at it. First, it was to evaluate it and then it's what can we actually get done? We don't want to set the expectation where we can't achieve that. So, if it's okay, Mr. Mayor, I'll get back to the council on that.
Sounds good. Well, let me ask a question. I don't want to open up a can of worms, but I believe that finance department changed our municipal code a couple of years ago. Will this budget come before us as an ordinance?
Yes.
And technically, I think the council has the authority now to change an ordinance the night of the vote, just to clarify that. So, there's a very compelling reason next Monday, which I assume we're going to vote on this next Monday.
That's our
That's the plan.
Yep.
If there's a compelling reason to make a change, it can be made then. Are you suggesting to bring back your discussions with the chief and bring it back? And then, at the time, Alderman Bram can make a motion if he wants to? Is that what you're
Yes.
Proposing in a very short way that I just drew out forever? Okay. So, Alderman Bram, you're okay with that?
Sounds good, thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Alderman York.
Just to follow, so, was Alderman Bram's suggestion to add money to the budget for more license plate readers, that's what we're going to hear about, whether it's feasible?
That is potentially it. He wants to accelerate the purchase. Right now, it's split into two years, half million dollar total. Okay. Well, question. Well, it wasn't a motion, it was just a discussion, but clarified, yes?
Yes.
All right.
I'm good.
Alderman York. Alderman Levin.
All right, maybe I misread. I thought the suggestion was to move the money into the current fiscal year. Did you mean you were thinking about moving 2019 into 2018?
He wants to, instead of taking two years to install, he wants to buy it all in one year.
Which I think what Alderman Levin just said is the same thing, if I'm understanding.
The current fiscal year is 2017, so obviously
No, well, 2018 and 2019. He wants to combine them in 2018.
2018, all right.
In theory, no motion has been made at this point.
No, we're just, this is all theory.
Okay. Additional comments or questions as it relates to the circle back or the budget at this time?
I know everyone
Alderman Palmsky.
One more point. It will be quick. I'm not going to ask to do anything with it, just questions about it. The Public Affairs and Safety Committee has been looking at the underpass sign.
What page, do you know?
That's my question. I don't know. Remember, one point is closer to 230, but then where can I find it in the budget? In our discussion in February, the proposal was two signs up to $155,000 each, so 310,000 is a high point.
The magic KEB?
The sign right now is budgeted in IT, that's correct. Yeah, page 117 and 18.
What page, Jim?
Page 117 and 118.
I think it's 8098, Ms. Lane.
8098, that's correct. And it's, it's in the current fiscal year at, under the 385,000.
8098, got it.
So, is that the actual spent on 209,000 or about 210 from 2016? What else is included in that budget line, I guess, is my question? And how much is allocated for the sign?
809
155.
So, on page, for council, we're on page 118, last line item, 8098.
The 385.
Well, yeah. Alderman, Palmsky's asking for a little bit of history because we had actual spend in 15 and 16 of over 200,000.
I think the arrest is VOIP.
Pardon?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, Alderman, I didn't hear what you said.
I thought it was the VOI, the voice over internet, wasn't that part of this line?
Yeah, if you look at page 109 in the KEB.
The very last page of the budget book.
There's a breakdown of those IT projects.
So, under 17, under miscellaneous, the 385, that, all those in there?
Correct. And it's part of the $205,000 for audio video equipment. 155 of that is for the sign and 50,000 is for equipment here in the city council chambers.
Okay, so, there's money allocated for the sign. We don't know where that will come out of committee, but it's not, it doesn't look like it's listed to carry over.
Staff's intent that we would carry it over, we would propose to carry it over.
Okay, so, the question is of the 385 that are there, how much would carry over? Do you estimate?
At least the 150, if not
155.
So, the 205 is probably the carryover. So, those two items that I mentioned, the equipment for city council chambers and then the electronic sign.
Okay.
So, staff would be proposing a carryover of $205,000 for that line item.
Okay. Palmsky, does that make sense?
Okay, it does, although, I'm sorry, the 85 existing covers what?
That's the next line item on the KEB, the next column, 2018.
I put mine in the front. Okay. So, but my question also was, the last time we brought up the budget and it was in February, there were, the proposal was, and maybe Kent can answer this, two signs, one for each side of the underpass, it'd be 155 each. I'm not advocating for the sign, I'm just, want to see where this is.
I believe that was total for the two signs.
Yeah, Robert.
The 150.
Okay. That flies over here now. Have this report right here. Thank you.
Okay, so, it sounds like of the 385, 205 will carry over. Approximately 55,000 for new equipment here in this room and 150,000 potentially for a sign that is still at committee.
55 and 50.
Okay. Any other conversations, questions or comments on this budget? All right, so, city manager, it is the intent, a little housekeeping. As I've noted before, we're required by law to pass a budget.
So is the state.
Has the state, who doesn't pass their own budget. Oh, the irony.
It's their law.
It's the law, they must. So, December 4th, that's next Monday, this budget will be on the agenda, correct? Council's aware? Yes?
Correct. And we're also required to hold a public hearing, which is scheduled for that night.
Do we hold it in the middle of the meeting? Or do we do it before?
In the middle of
Beginning of the meeting is when we've
Oh, we do like two public forums? Okay. All right. Any other comments or questions? I entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Alderman Mulliner, second by Alderman Toledo. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed or adjourned? Thank you, everybody.